Check, 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 check. Two oh four.
Andrea!
I see that.
Mr. Clerk, if you would please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Stella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Ready, let's go.
Post One Alderwoman, Carolyn H. Phil.
Present.
Post Two Alderwoman, Alicia Miller Blakely.
Present.
District One Alderwoman, Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman, Dietrich Leggett.
Yeah.
And District Six Alderman, Curtis Purtee.
Last but not least, I'm here.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order today is Thursday, October the 23rd, 2025, Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all, and for us, all means all. Our inviter today will be introduced by District Two Alderman, Dietrich Leggett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See to Savannah. For the first time, I want to make sure you guys understand that I'm going to introduce you to a visionary, a college ministry coach, an author, and a thoughtful leader. Today, I introduce you to Reverend Claude Douglas Cheatham Jr., combined sound biblical teaching, business acumen, liberation, a theologian, and the body of Christ into action as he's a great leader. Since his youth, Reverend Cheatham has prevailed against his odds, rising from Sheiler High School, earning his Masters of Business Administration, turning a second chance into a sacred calling. He previously served as the College of Young Adults Director in Elizabeth Baptist Church in Atlanta, Georgia, where he mobilized over 5,000 college students and young adults through the Vibe Ministry, Vibe Ministry, one of the leading Generation Z-led ministries of the region at the time. Currently, he serves as the Senior Pastor and Teacher at St. Luke Missionary Baptist Church in Savannah, Georgia, a thriving intergenerational ministry that embraces the richness and traditional teaching while moving boldly in the freshness of the Spirit. A second generational preacher, Reverend Cheatham holds degrees from Bethune-Cookman, a BA, and from Edward Waters University of Masters of Business Administration. He is currently pursuing his Masters of Divinity at the Samuel Dewitt Proctor School of Theology in Virginia University in Richmond. He also studied the United Theological Seminary at Dayton, Ohio. He is the author of Cracking the Code of Creating College Ministry and the Hypostatic Union of Ministry, Bridging Baptist Roots with Pentecostal Fire. Licensed to preach in 2006 and ordained in 2020, Reverend Cheatham is a dedicated college minister in the strategic, with the strategy in higher education and professionalism. He has served as an administrative counselor, campus pastor, professor, and academic advisor. He also is a proud member of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated and activities engaged in civic initiatives and uplifting historic marginalized community. Reverend Cheatham is married to his best friend, Reverend Alexis Michelle Cheatham. Together, they are raising three amazing children, Zion John Eric, Claude III, and Zaria. Marked by integrity and innovation, Reverend Claude Douglas Cheatham Jr. is committed to building people, birthing purpose, and bolding, boldly pursuing the spirit of excellence in every assignment. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce you to the Reverend Claude D. Cheatham Jr.
Friends, shall we bow in prayer? Sovereign Savior, mighty master, we come before you this afternoon, the spirit of gratitude, grateful for another day, grateful for the grace that rests on this great city known as Savannah. Thank you for the privilege of gathering under the canopy of community, collaboration, and compassion. Lord, we thank you for this historic city, a city of charm and character, a city that carries the soul of struggle and the song of survival. Thank you, God, for the squares to each sanctuary and community of faith that your presence dwells. Thank you for Mayor Johnson, a leader of conviction and compassion, strength in his hands and steady his heart as he continues to lead with vision, wisdom, and courage. We lift up every council member, and particularly Alderman Leggett, who serves, his service reflects dignity and his duty. Bless each of them with discernment beyond politics and patience beyond pressure. God, we also thank you for the presence of Savannah State University, proud tigers that roar, that remind us that education is liberation. Bless every student, professor, and graduate who carries the legacy of excellence. May this partnership between the city and the university continue to produce purpose, progress, and promise. And Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of St. Luke Missionary Baptist Church where the spirit of the Lord is. May that same spirit rest on this city council today. Remind us that government without grace becomes grim, but leadership under the anointing brings life and light to a community. In these challenging yet hopeful times, help us to see that unity is not uniformity, and progression is not partisan, it's personal. Let the decision made in this chamber echo equality and equity, speak with empathy, and walk with integrity. God, we pray for every neighborhood, from the young man on the corner looking for direction to the elders sitting on their porch praying for protection. Cover every school, every street, every small business, and every servant leader who keeps Savannah strong. As we move forward, give us hearts that are humble, hands that are helpful, and hope that is holy. Remind us that the city still belongs to you, and as long as you reign, Savannah has a future worth fighting for. We pray this, we pray this prayer in the name of the Liberator from Nazareth, the Chainbreaker from Calvary, the Savior who still saves, Jesus Christ, we all say together, amen.
Amen.
Let us honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. You may be seated. Pastor Cheatham, thank you so much. Welcome to Savannah. We are glad that you are here, and you have assumed the leadership of a wonderful congregation on 38th Street. Some good folks over there, and so we have no doubt that you will lead them into their next chapter. However...
Oh, gosh. Oh, goodness.
You need to know this. I heard that you were from Edward Waters, and I heard that you were from Bethune-Cookman. Those are bad words around here. You might want to don some blue and orange. This is tiger country. Well, Dr. World is here, and we will be more than glad to initiate you into tiger country, and I'm not even going to talk about what the clerk is talking about, about that, about that red, that red and white. But, you know, that's a whole nother thing, but we're glad that you're here. Thank you very much. Want to just also wish our residents a happy Diwali, which has occurred over the last couple of days, the new year, and may every dial we light reflect the blessings we receive from each other, from our hearts to yours. Happy Diwali, filled with prosperity, peace, and unity. We know in unity there is strength, and we know in unity that there is light. So, happy Diwali. The other thing I wanted to lift up is that we're also in the midst of a government shutdown that is soon to become unprecedented, and we have individuals in our community, regardless of the politics of it all, who did not get a check, who, whose bills don't care about the politics in Washington. And so, we have been working with our Chamber of Commerce and with our Economic Development Authority to be able to find ways to help those who need help. Food is still food, gas is still gas, and so I'm lifting that up because we could easily be in that situation. And I don't know about you, but I'm only one paycheck away of then needing some severe help myself. So, if you can, you can go to the chamber's website, and we are providing ways you could also donate to United Way. The United Way has been helping folks in this community for years, and also our food bank. There are ways that we can help individuals have the things they need during these very strange times. So, thank you very much. Beyond that, we also will go ahead and move into our agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Are you ready, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, item number one.
All right. I would like to make a motion for the first item on our agenda. I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for October 23rd, 2025.
Second motion.
Property moves in second, we adopt the regular meeting agenda for October 23rd, 2025. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to also make a motion for items number two and three on our agenda for the approval of the minutes of the work session, executive session held on October 9th, 2025, at 11 o'clock a.m., and making a motion for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on October 9th at 2 o'clock p.m.
Second motion.
Property moves in second, that we approve the minutes for the work session, executive session held on October the 9th, 2025, at 11 a.m., and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 9th at 2 o'clock p.m. You've heard the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Also, the city council held an executive session dealing with issues of litigation and real estate. I'm asking that authorization be signed, affidavit to the effect that only those items discussed during the meeting and no votes were taken.
So moved.
Second.
Property moves in second, and all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For playing purposes, item number four is our regular meeting schedule for the 2026 calendar year. As you all know, things sometimes are subject to change, so this is for approval at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second motion.
Property moves in second, and all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to our presentations, we're always glad to have retired educators with us, and I take great pleasure in inviting them up. The Chatham Retired Educators Association. And I saw a state representative and my predecessor, our 64th mayor, 65th mayor, Representative Edna Brand Jackson here, so y'all just show her some love because she's here. Proclamation from the city of Savannah reads as follows. Whereas the city of Savannah recognizes the invaluable contributions of retired educators whose years of service have shaped generations of students, enriched our schools, and strengthened the foundation of learning in our community. Whereas the state of Georgia has officially proclaimed November the 2nd, 2025, as Retired Educators Day in recognition of the thousands of former teachers, administrators, and educational professionals who continue to give of themselves even after their former careers have ended. And whereas there are more than 145,000 retired educators in Georgia, 34,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas retired educators continue to serve our city in many capacities through mentorship, volunteerism, tutoring, civic leadership, and supporting educational initiatives that help students thrive. And whereas their legacy of dedication, experience, and wisdom continues to uplift families, students, and neighborhoods across Savannah. And where it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. Now therefore, I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the city of Savannah, do hereby proclaim November the 2nd, 2025, as Retired Educators Day in the city of Savannah, and encourage all citizens to join me in honoring and celebrating these pillars of education, expressing our gratitude for their lifelong service and continuing contributions to our community's future, and witness wherever I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Savannah to be affixed this 23rd day in of 2025. Ladies and gentlemen, I come from a family of educators, a family of math teachers actually here in Savannah, and I'll tell you, everything I learned, I learned it from a teacher. And so we are always very, very happy to celebrate these individuals, not only who have served, but who continue to serve, so let's show some love for our teachers. Always the teachers, so thank you. Say what you want to say.
On behalf of President Dr. Kathy Grant, Dr. Pamela West is president-elect, would like to thank all of Mayor Johnson and the council team for the time and effort that you put in in considering giving us this proclamation. As you know, we are educators who take a lot of pride in what we do and a lot of care for the teachers who are still out on what some might call the battlefield, but it is our future, and we do the things that we can do to continue to encourage them to want to continue to push forward so that they can help the citizens of tomorrow.
How many years did you teach?
Thirty-two and a half years.
Yes, yes.
We used to actually, back in my police days, we worked together, so you're still looking good. Do you look like Mary too? All right. Go ahead, name how many years you've served.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Brown White, and I taught 31 years.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Brenda Roberts, and I worked for 37 years.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Garcia Wilder, and I've served in many capacities for a number of 31 years.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been, I guess it's been over since 1971 in some capacity in education.
Well, once a teacher, always a teacher. So thank you all so much, and we appreciate you for all that you do and continue to do for us. And I hope to look that good when I've served 31 years anywhere, so, yes.
Good Johnson, I can't see my system.
See, teacher's still telling you what to do. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. It's homecoming. CJ, they don't do that LSU. I will tell you that, Savannah team, Savannah State, come on up. The, if I had to do it all over again, Mayor Jackson, I would end up as Savannah State, the Savannah State, the Savannah State.
Yes, sir.
University, Georgia's oldest public historically black college and university. For us, Savannah State is our school, but Savannah is their campus, and there are so many ways, everyone has a connection to Savannah State, for those of us that were blessed to matriculate there, for those of us that have families there, for those first-generation college students that were there, and every year, we look forward to the reconsommation of the marriage between Savannah and Savannah State, and that is with homecoming. And so it is an opportunity for us to come home, to not only visit, but also to reaffirm our commitment to our beloved institution that has served us so well. And the good Lord just happens to know what we need when we need it. We have a leader in Dr. Jermaine World, who is energetic, he gets the assignment, and I will tell you that he has embraced the assignment all claws down.
Yes, sir.
We had a conversation a year or two ago at another event in somewhere in Statesboro, we were talking, I want that job at Savannah State, and I will tell you, he has embraced it, his wardrobe has changed significantly, and you could do it too. But he has really come on and re-energized this university and this community. Savannah State is on the move again, and so let me welcome Dr. Jermaine World and the Savannah State University. It's homecoming.
Mayor, we are here.
Yes, you are.
Aldermen, council, thank you all for this exciting opportunity to come bring greetings from the Savannah State University. Listen, I'm excited, you know, we've been in the throes of homecoming all week, and I'm going to pass the mic, but I wanted to say a few things. On behalf of the university, we're humbled to be a part of this community since 1890, educating individuals for a lifetime of, I would say, well-earned earnings, lifestyle, and more importantly, traditions that have carried on for many, many generations. And so homecoming is an opportunity for those alums that are far and few between to come back into this great city, to have that reunion with their classmates, their friends, their families, to really celebrate one of Georgia's, what I call our national treasure, right here in the heart of the city of Savannah. So we appreciate this partnership. I know earlier this year, we celebrated the internship opportunities with the city, and so we just really thank you all for your continued support of our institution. I'm going to bring up two of our leaders that are leading homecoming to give you some information about what's happening this week. We had a golf tournament this morning, about 120 players. We got Terrence J. on campus as we speak. We have a lot of activities, but they'll give you a quick rundown of all activities, but more importantly, I want to invite each of you to our homecoming activities throughout this weekend. We hope to see you at one of those events or all those events as we continue to celebrate the university by the sea, and of course, we will have a wonderful cheer from our cheerleaders here, our Tiger, and we do have members of our administration, two of our vice presidents are here, our alumni chapter president is here, many of our alumnis are here in attendance, and of course, back on the main campus, so we are just thrilled to be here, and I'm going to hand it off to Marcelo and Leandre and give you a little bit more insights on what's to come this weekend. Help me invite them to the mic.
We thank you all so much for helping us as this week have already got us started, took a strong start. So what's going on? So tonight, first of all, at 4 o'clock today, we have our renaming of our College of Education to the Hyundai College of Education, that's at 4 o'clock today, so we're excited about that. At 5:30 this afternoon, we also have our crowning of the alumni queens, and at 7 o'clock is our really big event, the crowning, our coordination of Mr. and Mrs. Savannah State University. We invite you all out to any of those events. Tomorrow's our big yard show, so come on out to the fish fry, everybody's always inside by the fish fry, and the step show on tomorrow night where the Sigmas will probably win. All right, but on Saturday, on Saturday, with your permission, we'll be hosting one of the best parades in Savannah, and so we're excited about a lot of the city council have already registered for those events, and we have your parade package, and then we are honored to have two of our judges of the parade in the house, I see Jennifer Davenport from Savannah Area Chamber over there, and Alderwoman Carol Bell will be judging our parade this year, so we're really excited about that. And then, of course, don't forget about the big gaming, at 3 o'clock is more house, so we love to see y'all out there and glad for the support.
Go Tigers.
Mayor, if it's okay with you and the council, we want to let our cheerleaders just give us one little small chant, making a little bit of noise in the building, if that's okay. I'll let them lead us through, and then we'll go from there.
I see y'all doing the same cheer too.
Well, Mayor, we're here to get our permits so that we can have this wonderful occasion happening 9 o'clock right here in downtown, and we also, of course, have some gifts for you and our council. We appreciate, again, your leadership in this community.
Yeah.
Well, it depends, this is something that's an issue of mine, and maybe now that you're here, you can help. I think the step show has been rigged over the last couple of years. They say the Sigmas won, but it's very clear the Alphas are the best. So if you can promise me that we're going to have fair judging.
Yes, sir.
You know, don't have Marcelo Stewart nowhere near the judges' table this year. We would be glad to do that, but before I do, we have your administration, we want y'all come and introduce yourselves, and Sarah Lee, want everybody to know who you are and what you do.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Samantha Hutcherson, and I am the new vice president of business and finance at Savannah State University.
Good afternoon and thank you. My name is Terrence Dixon, I'm vice president for enrollment management, student affairs, and marketing at Savannah State University.
Harold Washington, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the president of the National Alumni Association, class of 1998 from Savannah and born and raised in Savannah.
Hello, my name is Sammy. I am class of 28. I'm a major in biology, and I'm from Atlanta, Georgia.
Hello, my name is Janaya. I major in business marketing. I am a sophomore, and I am from Columbia, South Carolina.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nakayla, and I'm from Washington, Georgia, and I'm a freshman, and my major is behavioral analysis.
Hey, y'all, my name is Ally. I'm from right here, Savannah, Georgia, so yeah, I major in criminal justice, and I'm a freshman.
Very good.
Hi, everyone. I don't have a voice right now, but I'm a junior, and I'm a major in mass communications, and I'm from Atlanta, Georgia.
And the big guy doesn't talk much. He just takes care of business. It is our pleasure to present, I mean, the step show going to be?
Yes, sir. I promise, Mayor.
All right, I just, the Sigmas win again, I mean, that's a problem.
I understand.
You see our city manager over there with his, you know, see? We're real clear, I just got to get my city attorney in it and the clerk, and we'll be good, we're working on that. But it's our pleasure, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion as the agenda is written for this particular item.
Second.
Property moves in second, that we issued this parade permit to Savannah State University. The parade is on Saturday, it starts at 10?
9.
Oh, 9 a.m. Just beginning, 9 o'clock. We're inviting everybody to come on out, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Happy homecoming, bring us the win. It's on, it's on now. Oh, thank you so much. And I wanted to thank also Dr. World for some of you that did not realize I was stepping in and out. The African-American Mayors Association is here, and I have mayors here from our association, and so we were doing a career fair at Savannah State that Dr. World was gracious enough to host, and so I was back and forth for that, but thank you so much. Young people need to see what they need to see.
Absolutely.
And so we appreciate you, and we appreciate all the activities, not just about the athletics, but about academics, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Y'all clap for my college, come on. And put your hands together, we have some more great heroes here, our veterans councils here, y'all come on up. Round of applause for the Veterans Council of Chatham County. We're always a pleasure to have these wonderful heroes among us, and Alderwoman Blakely is coming to join us. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I actually let you guys know.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I actually let you guys know, this is my sixth and final year running this organization. It has been an honor and privilege of my life to represent the 26,000 veterans throughout Savannah and Chatham County. I appreciate the support that you guys have given us and I am hoping that you will continue to do that with my predecessor, whoever that may be. But the real reason that we're here is to introduce two very, very important people to us. Joining me to help introduce them, I have my vice chairman, Harry Gardner. I have my parade adjutant, Robbie McGrath. I have past veteran of the year, Jerry Walker. The first person I would like to bring up and introduce is our 2025-2026 Veteran of the Year, retired Chief Master Sergeant, United States Air Force, Sam Curry.
I'd like to thank you for holding this for us and we really do appreciate everything that you do, being a military community. I watch this very closely and I want to thank you all for helping us provide for our veterans and the military community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And of course, on November the 11th, good Lord willing in your vote to pass, we will be having our annual parade throughout the streets of downtown Savannah. And leading that parade, we have Dr. Faye Prescott, United States Navy veteran and founder of My Veterans Place.
Yeah.
I put it on here so I won't get off task. It is truly an honor, one that's both humbling and deeply meaningful, to be selected as the first African-American female grand marshal for Veterans Day. I'm standing on the shoulders of those who came before me, women who served, sacrificed, and often was unseen and unsupported. This is not just about me. This is not just about my story. It's about all of us. It's about every woman veteran who wore the uniform with pride and strength, who balanced service, family, and resilience. I feel proud and grateful and inspired to represent them, to let the world see the power, grace, and contribution of women veterans. More than anything, more than anything, I feel very blessed to carry this honor with love, respect, and promise to keep opening doors to those who will follow me.
Thank you. Very good and congratulations. We are very, very proud of you. And tell us about the parade, Mr. Chairman. I know we're a little off, but.
It's getting closer every day. So we actually, this year was difficult to figure out what we were going to honor and after watching Faye do what she does on a daily basis, giving me inspiration to continue ongoing, we are spending our Veterans Day this year honoring our women veterans who are continuing to serve our community, such as Alderwoman Miller Blakely, still out there serving. So our parade will be at 10 o'clock on November the 11th. The usual starting lineup, I'm hoping each and every one of you will be in there. I'm pretty sure that we sent out, okay, he did. Cool. He sent out the invitation to make sure everybody got in there. But just help me honor our women veterans who are out there. They don't get as much recognition as they deserve. They did everything that every one of us did. They put on the uniform and served and they deserve it just as much as any of the rest of us, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Blakely, would you like to make a motion to issue the parade permit?
I make a motion that we issue the parade warrant for the Veterans Day Parade 2025.
Second.
And properly moved in seconded that we issue the parade permit from the City of Savannah to the Veterans Council of Chatham County for the 2025 Veterans Day Parade. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do you present? Oh, you sure can. And we'll have all of you, your names and when you served. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much and we look forward to the 2025 parade. It will be a great time. Let me go ahead and we'll dive into this agenda. We do not have any alcohol license hearings. We have no zoning hearings. Yeah, don't, yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't even say anything. Just, just, just thank, to the Lord, thank you.
Mic on, thank you.
But I will go ahead for purpose of expediency, go to our airport items, item number 26 through 41. This represents almost $15 million of investment in the world's greatest airport that continues to grow, continues to expand, and we are very, very grateful for them and the work that they do and continue to do. And also for those employees out there, the TSA folks and the folks in air traffic control and the folks that continue to work in spite of all this going on. Let me entertain a motion for these items, 26 through.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
I see Alderman per T.
Let Mayor Per T. go first.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items number 26 through 35, 39, and 41.
Okay. Entertained a motion into items number 26 through 35, item number 39 and 41. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let me read them into the record. 26 is to ratify the acceptance of the Airport Improvement Program on the amount of $9,904,404. Item number 27 is to procure professional services for the evaluation of airfield drainage system for meat and hunt in the amount of $54,656. Item number 28, approval to execute a professional service agreement with Woodard and Associates in the amount of $144,000. Item number 29, approval of amendment one with P G A L for contract feasibility study in the amount of $94,750. Item number 30, approval to execute a contract with Infax Incorporated for the replacement of FIDS screens and conversion of static advertising to digital displays in the amount of $539,186. Item number 31, approval to procure environmental service supplies from Haskins Doyle Chemical and Supply Company in the amount not to exceed $500,000. Item number 32, approval of a three-year broadband service agreement with the Semissu Corporation in the amount of $55,590. Item number 33, approval of a three-year cable service agreement with Comcast Business Communications in the amount of $61,555. Item number 34, approval of the Concourse Alpha Door Replacement Project to complete, be completed by Founder's Maintenance and Restoration in the amount of $167,123. Item number 35, approval to purchase one skid steer with a snow blower from Hendrick's Machinery Incorporated in the amount of $89,355, $355. Snow blower, really?
Just a case.
Okay.
Got to keep the planes.
Item number 39, approval of a change order number six with Collins Construction for the fuel storage facility expansion project in the amount of $340,110. Item number 41, approval to execute a contract with ECS Southeast LLC for the reconstruct and expand North Apron Project in the amount of $55,625. We're now here, items 36, 37, 38, 40, and 42. Alderman per T., yes.
Move for the approval of items 36 through 38, number 40 and number 42.
Properly moved in seconded.
I would like to recuse myself for the purpose of business.
And properly moved in seconded with Alderwoman Shabazz recusing herself for business purposes. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 36 is approval of a task order, work order number 16 with AECOM for the terminal apron bypass taxi line and A1, A2, and A3 fillet widening project in the amount of Item number 37, approval of task work order number 18 with AECOM for the taxiway Alpha Reconstruction Project in the amount of $494,565. Item number 38, approval of task work order number four, amendment number one with AECOM for the inline baggage system in the amount of $437,360. Item number 40, approval of task work order number 34, amendment number two with AECOM for the terminal improvements landside project in the amount of $202,764. And item number 42, approval of task work order number 21 with AECOM for the permanent survey control monuments project in the amount of $50,000.
So moved, sir.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded and approved. Thank you very much. All right, let's go back to our purchasing items. Well, let's go, item number eight is approval of amendment to unlawful discrimination ordinance. This was something that was pointed out by our staff regarding this as an improvement to eliminate a fee to be able to file a claim of unlawful discrimination. Says it came from our DEI professional city manager. I, attorney, concurs, this is necessary. Alderman per T.
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval.
Second motion.
Properly moved in seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under purchasing.
I'm sorry, it's for, I'm sorry. It's for, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, moved at the first reading, be considered the second. Order is placed upon its passage and passed.
And properly moved in seconded, the first reading be considered the second. It's on its place upon its passage and passed. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Of the purchasing items, items nine through 25, are there any pullouts?
Mr. Mayor, pull number 19, please, sir.
Okay.
If there are no more pullouts, I'd like to make a motion for the purchasing.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for sure. For items number nine through, you said 19? Through 18 and.
20 through 25.
20 through 25.
Second.
Properly moved in seconded that we approve items number nine through 19, sorry, nine through 18, and 20 through 25. Item number nine is authorized city manager executed contract for 155-ton lowboy trailer from Savannah of freight liners in the amount not to exceed $99,900. Item number 10 is authorized city manager executed modification with J H C Corporation for the construction of a detention pond for Todd the Town Truman Trail Phase 2B in the amount of $500,000. Item number 11 is to authorize city manager executed annual contract to repair sidewalks, curbs, and cap, I'm sorry, cobblestone concrete streets with multiple vendors in the amount not to exceed $3 million. Item number 12, authorized city manager executed contract for a compact excavator with national equipment dealers in the amount of $79,789. Item number 13, authorized city manager executed contract for one 10-ton boom truck with crane with Hardy Family Ford in the amount of $284,792. Item number 14, authorized city manager to execute contract modification number one for I T S temp staff with Robert Half in the amount of $70,000. Item number 15, authorized city manager execute a contract modification number two to the five-year equity lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management in the amount not to exceed $694,099. Item number 16, authorized city manager execute a contract for a two-year mower lease agreement with John Deere Care of Beard Equipment in the amount not to exceed $639,405. Item number 17, authorized city manager to execute contract for water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure repair with Southern Champion Construction in the amount not to exceed Item number 18, authorized city manager to execute a contract for as-needed mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering services to Pond and Company Local in the amount of $300,000. Item number 20, authorized city manager executed contract for Broaden Ritten's River Street and City Market Decoration Installation with True Blue Construction LLC Local in the amount not to exceed $58,760. Item number 21, authorized city manager executed contract for citywide community holiday decoration installation with True Blue Construction LLC Local in the amount not to exceed $62,240. Item number 22, authorized city manager executed contract for a pharmacy benefit manager with Maxor in the amount not to exceed $29,459,106. Item number 23, authorized city manager to execute a contract for the other post-employee benefits Medicare Advantage Plan with Part D with United Healthcare in the amount not to exceed $2,549,905. Item number 24, authorized city manager to execute a contract for the voluntary employee dental and vision insurance with the standard insurance company at no cost to the city. Item number 25, authorized city manager to execute a contract with McKnight Construction Company for construction manager at-risk pre-construction services for the Windsor Forest Community Center, yea, in the amount of $7,500. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 19, authorized city manager executed contract for holiday trees, city hall decorations, and accessories with Stagefront Lighting and Theatrical Supply Company Local in the amount not to exceed $59,815. Alderwoman Wilder-Brian.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. It was number 21 that I wanted to speak on. About three years ago, the Alderman from the second district and I, we approached the city manager with spreading that same holiday cheer throughout the districts and needless to say, it was really nice. But I did the multiple, the division, Mr. City Manager, and while all of the decoration is like within four feet of City Market Downtown, we're only going to get 60 wreaths for each district from the 360 on here, right? And so last year, it said that they installed 650, but it doesn't say where our stuff was placed somewhere that they can go back and get them. It says insulation, removal, pack, and return to the city warehouse. And so do we not have the balance of those wreaths? We have this 360 now?
I don't know what the count is for our holiday wreaths. The holiday decoration plan for this year for our neighborhood decorations is the exact same that was approved by each council member last year. If there are some changes or tweaks you want to make, please email me and we can work with our special events, film, and tourism department to see if we can make those done. The reason that you're seeing these contracts is in the past, city council has wanted holiday decorations and we've made purchases, but we wanted to plan for it better this year. So we planned for the same program that we did in previous years, specifically last year. We've procured these services. That's why you're seeing them on the agenda. But if you need, if you want any additions in the neighborhood, send me what you want and we'll try to work on that.
So why I'm saying that is because this contract, right, it says retrieval and we still got up until like, when was it? We were still collecting Red Bulls. We want the same collection that they get around the city so that we can get more in our district as opposed, because whoever collected them, I'm not sure who, if Blue Tree Construction was the contractor who removed them, but they didn't come through my district and retrieve all of them. So I just want to make sure that they are.
And that's the reason that we're doing a little, we're doing, we made this a program this year, right? So that's why we wanted to put out these bids for the installation, the removal, the repackaging, make sure that we're doing it the right way.
And I wanted to acknowledge that, to say thank you for getting it. And I wanted to acknowledge that, to say thank you for getting it.
And thank you for pushing us to make these decorations.
Yes, sir. We want holiday in throughout all of the districts. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
For number 19, I move that we advise the city manager to execute a contract for holiday tree city hall decorations and accessories.
Second.
Thank you very much. Probably moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 43.
Mr. Mayor.
Approval of a water sewer agreement with Savannah Harbor Owner LLC and Savannah Harbor BTR for development of 210 single-family homes on Hutchinson Island in the President's Street Treatment Plant area of Alderman District 1. Alderman Lanier.
Second.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 44, approval of intergovernmental agreement between Chatham County and the City of Savannah for the countywide maintenance program. Yes, there's a, probably moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 45 is to authorize city manager to approve a major subdivision Camden Crossing and Cottage Road Phase 3. Probably moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends our agenda, and it's almost an hour.
Just, just...
How long we stay after this?
Just to thank you is all.
Depends on you. Just don't make the announcements longer than the agenda. So we'll start from... I started from this way before. Last time we did, right. Alderman Bell, anything? Alderman Miller Blakely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say, I have several announcements. On this Friday at 5:00 PM at Grayson Stadium, there's going to be a trick-or-treat event for the kids, and they want them to wear costumes. There's going to be bouncy houses, candy, et cetera, from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. I'm told that most city departments will be participating, and they want the kids to come out, and it's going to be lots of fun, and it's free.
Yes.
Okay? Also, I want to shout out my brother, Otis Bazzard, and our International Vice President, Mr. Willie Seymour, for an awesomely awesome golf event at Savannah State University. They're the ones that made that happen. Also, I want to ask for prayers for my grandson, Jabrell Blakely, who enlisted in the United States Army. He left on Sunday to go to basic training, so y'all, please, keep him in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep it in our prayer. Alderman per tea.
October 31st, at the Crusader Center, we have a trunk-or-treat. I believe, I can't remember what time it is, it's like 5:30, I believe, is when it starts. But come on down. They've got a lot of candy, and I even donated some. It's the good stuff. So come on by, get some, bring a costume, wear a costume, whatever. The other thing is if you're not able to join us, you're not able to see how beautiful the council chambers are. What's really cool this time is they have left the curtains and the blinds wide open. It lets the light in here, and you get to see everything. It's absolutely wonderful and beautiful. So thank you to city staff and all of our folks that were part of revitalizing this awesome space. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Plumbbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to echo my colleague's sentiments about the, let the light shine in. It is really beautiful in here. So, but this weekend is Wagween. So kudos and a shout-out to Development Services team, including our famous dog, Abby, that will be at Wagween this weekend. Kudos to Chief de Massimo and her team for her support. October 25th and 26th from noon to 5:00 PM, it's a downtown experience where we'll have wiener dog races at Pulaski Square, and all proceeds go to support rescue pets in our community.
Thank you. Alderman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. St. Joseph's Candla mobile mammogram bus is going to be at St. Philip Monumental AME Church on Thursday, November the 20th, Thursday, November 20th, 2025. The time is 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and they wanted me to make that announcement so that we can continue to have our mammograms and our breast screening in reference to even in this month of October, where we're wearing pink for the Awareness of Breast Cancer Month. So please, that the bus will be at St. Philip Monumental AME Church on Thursday, November 20th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilder-Bryan.
Yes, yes, yes. In the mighty 3rd District, we always doing mighty things. First of all, we having our aloofest hope with, at the Savannah Gardens on Saturday. When you finish with the Savannah State activities, come on by and assist Salatia. Also want to thank Manny Domingo with his...
Dominguez.
What was it?
Dominguez.
Dominguez, yes. Thank you for correcting me. We had an awesome civic engagement yesterday with some older citizens talking about social injustices and, would you say, excuse me? Innovations, right. The other thing is the Alderman from the 2nd District and I are having a free live concert on Halloween in Daphron Park from 6:00 to 9:30. In the 3rd District, we also have an initiative. We are collecting used lawnmowers to make sure that we assist and get some young entrepreneurs from the community. They get, they get community service from their schools, and they also have to, they can keep a lawnmower, but they have to take care of some of the elder citizens in that district. We wanted to offer a solution for the kids who are selling water on the street. We want to make sure that they do something that's safe. The lawnmower is the key. They'll be raking in the 3rd District, and we're just happy to be able to, to, to offer that to our young people in our community, and thank you for the partnerships. And also, I want, I missed out that SIPs Savannah Impact is partnering with us for the community citywide trick-or-treat in City Daphron Park. 6:00 to 9:30, please come out. We got candy, live bands, we got bounce houses, and we're going to have some safe fun. Thank you, sir. 3rd District, we rock.
Thank you. Alderman Leggett.
All right, Mr. Mayor. I don't think everybody know what's going on. So next, next week, the, again, me as a championship football coach, I invite everybody to come out to Savannah High School as the Ogarthorpe Charter School Football will take on Myers Middle School for the championship this year. And as you know, if a lot of people haven't been on social media, just bring you up to speed, let you know that Ogarthorpe Charter School beat West Chatham 60-0. So we, and also, we want to welcome everybody to the 2nd District on Saturday to come out and help with homecoming and help out our, our community as we usher Savannah State throughout our community. And the 2nd District float is going to win again. So I want, I want everybody to come out. If you hear us coming down the street, you know, just throw your hands up, celebrate with us. Again, Holy Spirit Lutheran Church on the Thursday before, before Halloween, we will have a trunk-or-treat on 37622 East 37th Street. So everybody's welcome to come by and just have a great time. We, Wes Chief de Massimo, so we of Chatham Area Transit, we ask for the prayers of one of our own, Mr. Mayor Van May. She, she had a medical emergency. Her name is Ms. Morrell. She had a medical emergency on Skidaway, and I want to offer prayers, start over to her but to her entire family. And I honor her today, Mr. Mayor, because instead of her during her medical emergency just wreck into, carry heads or tear up a bunch of cars, she guided her bus into an area where she did not hit anybody, but she had a severe medical emergency where she is still hospitalized, and we're not hearing great things, but we're praying for her and her life and her family at this moment.
Thank you for keeping our prayers. Alderman Lanier.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank the city manager, the assistant city manager, Ms. Young, and Nick in Recreation for the excellent job that you all did and staff on this past Monday in the Highlands. I'm hearing nothing but good things about the work that you did out there on, not really Recreation Reimagine, but Recreation Imagine. Okay, so thank you all for that. And on this Saturday, the Hudson Hill community will be having a block party on Tooton Street between Weldon and Crenson, encouraging membership and just togetherness in this season. So you're welcome to come out to that. On next Saturday, which is November the 1st, the West Bay Community Market at Brittany and Bay Street will be done again, but come out early, and you could have some free fish and grits. Fish and grits, everybody, come on out. And after that event, I'm headed to Brickyard where they're going to have a community-wide event and a homecoming on their park. So lots happening right now in the 3rd, in the 1st District. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And for me, once, actually, I continue to ask for the prayers of the family of April Harmon Daniels. My cousin that passed away was funeralized this past Saturday. Also, there are a variety of activities going on. The Savannah Police Department has a very, very huge, I don't know what you call it, but central precinct trick or trunk, it's not even, huh? It's really not a trunk-or-treat. I mean, we're not in the cars. They go into this precinct, but it's really pretty scary. But they give away a bunch of, a bunch of candy. I mean, kids getting sugar all over the place. So let's make sure we thank Team Savannah for recognizing that young people need safe places to be able to obtain candy. I mean, you know, sometimes going door-to-door just ain't the move no more. Go to one place, get all the candy you want, and just go on home and drive your parents crazy. Also, to remind you, I have the African American Mayors Association here over the weekend, enjoying Savannah, enjoying Savannah State University. So it's my privilege serving as the mayor of that organization to have some of my colleagues here from other cities, seeing how Savannah does things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quickly, we wanted to ask all the men of different neighborhoods if they're not doing anything during trick-or-treat, if they were standing on the corners of their, respect their neighborhoods, to help usher our kids through the dark areas, to help the police, help our kids through the different thoroughfares. So if all the men that live in these areas are standing on the corners, they don't have anything to do to help our kids and make sure that they're safe going through our neighborhoods.
Hopefully, that'll be the last year. Once we get finished with Light Up Savannah, we'll have lights everywhere. So, Ms. Clerk, do you have anything? Ms. Attorney, do you have anything? Ms. Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. The City of Savannah in partnership with the St. Joseph's Candler and WSAV Paint the Town Pink Fundraising
That's right.
Will illuminate City Hall in pink beginning tonight at 6:45 PM, and it will be pink until October 27th, the Adverbance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, we thank all of you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, Team Savannah, for being the best and helping us be the best. This meeting is adjourned. And Mrs., I want more agendas like this.